Common Council Meeting to Order will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilwoman Kaneshny.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Clerk Treasurer Parthone.
Councilwoman Kaneshny.
Present.
Councilman Buchanan.
Here.
Councilwoman West is absent. Councilman Frankie.
Here.
Councilwoman Huffman.
Here.
Councilwoman Ficus.
Present.
Councilman Galloway.
Here.
Six present, one absent.
Petitions and comments of the citizens, do we have anything online?
Nothing online.
Is there, this will be the opportunity to speak on all agenda items. I only do have one item right now, is that it? Or does anybody else have? A comment card. Okay, Sierra Sue Jess, please come over and state your name and address for the record, please. Welcome, Sue.
Thank you. My name is Sierra Sue Jess and I live on Stone, eh, no, I don't live on Stone Lake right now. I used to.
East Jefferson.
Okay, my comments tonight are about the downtown are not friendly to seniors and others that have trouble with mobility. Couple of years ago, I came before the council because of all the benches being taken up and have not been replaced. There was talk about putting ones up that people could sit on, but you couldn't sleep on, and nothing has been done about it. And sometimes I can walk a long distance and sometimes I can't. And in the past, I've had to sit on planters just to have someplace to relax. And I see that we still haven't done anything about replacing the bricks on the sidewalks or making sure they're not sticking up. I have tripped twice over the last, not this year, but the last two years before that. And the last time, I ended up in physical therapy. But, you know, something needs to be done about these. We're wanting to improve the downtown, but you're not doing anything to help senior citizens or what about little kids running down the street? They could trip just as easily as I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Mayor, can I say something here?
Councilman Galloway.
Um, I don't know, the benches, they kinda, we've gone to metal benches at the PFW. Very strong, they're cheap, and you'd have to worry about coating them or nothing. So it's something to think about if you have to replace them. Thank you, it's all I got, bud.
Thank you. Any other comments? Approval of minutes, July 21st, 2025.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion and second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Standing Committee reports, Council President Frankie.
Redevelopment Commission met last Wednesday, the 30th. Not a whole lot happened, they approved more claims. There was a concerned resident who spoke about the pavers in Newport Landing. I think we all agree that pavers in general aren't a good long-term solution, but he had asked RDC to take a look at them because I guess they're getting bad again. That's it.
And just as an FYI, the Newport Landing, pavers will be addressed, the remaining ones that were up will be addressed this week, being repaired. Councilwoman Huffman.
Thank you, I have nothing to report this evening.
Councilwoman Ficus.
Traffic Commission meets tomorrow, 5:00 PM at the police station, and then Park Board will hold their next meeting Wednesday, August 20th, 4:00 PM at the park office.
Councilman Galloway.
Nothing really to report, except we had a great rib cook-off, which you missed, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
They were good.
Councilman Buchanan.
Nothing to report this evening.
Councilwoman Kaneshny.
Uh, the Airport Authority. Folks, mark your calendars, the airfare will be returning this September the 13th and 14th, more details to come in the future. And then the next Airport Authority meeting will be next Wednesday, August 13th, at 5:15 at the airport.
Council President, I'm sorry, Councilman Buchanan.
Your Honor, I make a motion to read an ordinance for the second time by title only.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Councilman Buchanan.
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of LaPorte, Indiana as enacted August 21st, 2017, which is part of Chapter 82 of the Municipal Code of the City of LaPorte, by amending the official zone map that are a part of the zoning ordinance in order to rezone one parcel of real estate in the city of LaPorte. I can read the general description of the area.
Please do.
It. I thought I had it.
There you go. This one? Uh, no. Maybe it's the second page on the.
I just have the physical description.
This one.
There it is.
Sorry.
The ordinance rezones one parcel of real estate in the city of LaPorte, Indiana, the parcel located approximately four tenths of a mile south of the intersection at Interstate 8090 Toll Road and State Road 39 North on the east side of State Road 39 North in LaPorte, Indiana, is rezoned from B3 Highway Commercial District to R3A Low Rise Multi-Family Residential District.
Bert Cook.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, City Council. Bert Cook, Executive Director of the LaPorte Economic Advancement Partnership. Just as a means of summary, because we obviously covered this ordinance, you heard first reading at your last meeting. Plan Commission always makes a recommendation in a situation like this, which they recommended favorably, that you consider changing the zoning from B3 to R3A for this property. I think we covered at the last meeting that Tiffany Woods, which is a residential neighborhood there, backs up to this, and, you know, we had concerns about commercial zoning in that area. Appreciate that Mike Sullivan and Ryan Metz are here again tonight to represent this. I'm sure they're happy to answer questions if you have specific questions I cannot answer, but we have been working together on a multi-family residential development plan that would require this zoning and ultimately would result in the development of the 55-acre parcel that you're considering tonight. I'm happy to answer questions if you have them of me, I'm sure these gentlemen will be happy to answer questions as well. For your edification, I don't know if you received calls, but since your last meeting, you know, we haven't had any calls with questions. I think there were, Councilman Buchanan will, can second this, but there were some good questions that were asked at Plan Commission, questions that ultimately will deal more with the site review process and the development plan for the site itself, but since that point, I have not had any questions in my office about this change and obviously very supportive of it, so.
Comments, Mr. Cook? Gentlemen, welcome again, and further comments? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Waiver of noncompliance of Form EZ-2, Council President Frankie.
Your Honor, I move to read a resolution for the first and only time.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Council President Frankie.
And I'm sure once I get through the legalese, Bert will be back explaining it in terms everyone can understand. A resolution pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-45-10D determining that certain incomplete Form EZ-2 Greater Highlands LLC DBA Aldi Grocery Store for real property be waived for enterprise zone investment deductions to be applied on January 1st, 2025. Whereas the LaPorte Urban Enterprise Association is designated under Indiana Code 5-28-15 titled Enterprise Zones, more specifically under Section 2 and 13, as the Urban Enterprise Association established in the city of LaPorte, LaPorte County, Indiana. And whereas the LPUEA pursuant to Indiana Code 5-28-15-14B3 was incorporated on or about March 4, 2002, as a nonprofit domestic corporation duly organized and existing under the laws of the state of Indiana pursuant to the Indiana Not-for-Profit Corporation Act of 1971 with the purpose as identified under Article 2 titled Purpose of the Articles of Incorporation, such that the LPUEA was formed to handle the Urban Enterprise Association duties and benefits as provided by state law for the benefit of LaPorte's urban enterprise zone as designated by the state of Indiana with all powers as provided by state law. And whereas pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-45 titled Enterprise Zone Investment Deduction, more specifically Section 9, a taxpayer that makes qualified investment is entitled to a deduction from the assessed value of the taxpayer's enterprise zone property located at the enterprise zone location for which the taxpayer made the qualified investment. And whereas pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-45-10, a taxpayer that desires to claim an EZID for a particular year shall file a certified application EZ-2 with the Office of LaPorte County, Indiana Auditor, such that the Form EZ-2 must be filed before May 15th of the assessment year. And whereas Greater Highlands LLC DBA Aldi Grocery Store located at 199 Pine Lake Avenue in the city of LaPorte, Indiana, constructed qualified real property improvements, which included the purchase and installation of qualified personal property as first assessed on January 1st, 2023 and January 1st, 2024, according to records of the auditor. And whereas based upon the auditor's review, Greater Highlands did not submit with the auditor a form, a complete Form EZ-2 to be eligible for an EZID as it applied to qualified investments of real property for taxes due and payable for 2025, pay 2026. Whereas pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-45-10D2, the LPUEA may by resolution waive failure to file a complete deduction application after holding a public hearing on the waiver. And whereas the LaPorte UEA staff scheduled and duly published notice in the Herald Dispatch as a qualified publication notice of said public hearing for which said public hearing would be conducted on Tuesday, July 29th, 2025, as attached hereto as Exhibit A. And whereas the LPUEA conducted its duly published public hearing on July 29th, 2025, at which the Board of Directors opened said LPUEA meeting to receive and hear all remonstrances and objections written in oral from interested persons as it related to the waiver of the 2025 Form EZ-2 of Greater Highland LLC as not complete when filed with the auditor. And whereas the LPUEA Board of Directors, after conducting and upon conclusion of the public hearing on said matter, gave consideration to all evidence submitted and provided, and if any, comments and views expressed before and written comments submitted in a complete manner pursuant to the notice of public hearing as published. And whereas the LPUEA has met the statutory requirements of Indiana Code 6-1.1-45-10D in order to now formally consider waiver applicable to the 2025 pay 2026 Form EZ-2 of Greater Highland LLC for qualified real property investments located at 199 Pine Lake Ave, as it applies to an EZID for the assessment date of January 1st, 2025. And whereas the LPUEA desires to support Greater Highland LLC as a zone business that has made qualified investments in the LaPorte UEA Urban Enterprise Zone by consideration of a waiver for failure to file complete filings of Form EZ-2s for years 2024 and 2025. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Directors of the LaPorte UEA as follows. One, Greater Highland LLC has made a qualified investment in LaPorte Urban Enterprise Zone of real property at its own location of 199 Pine Lake Ave in the city of LaPorte, Indiana, for which the taxpayer is eligible to receive an EZID. Number two, the Form EZ-2 for the assessment dates of January 1, 2025 was not complete when filed. Number three, LPUEA hereby waives Greater Highlands LLC failure to file complete the Form EZ-2 for 2025, the assessment dates of January 1, 2025, applicable to real property qualified investment of Greater Highlands LLC. Number four, the waiver for the assessment date of January 1, 2025 shall apply only to the January 1, 2025 assessments date, dates calculation of an EZID. Number five, the Form EZ-2 for the assessment date of January 5, 2025 as waived is to be filed with the auditor to correct the filing record of the January 1, 2025 assessment year Form EZ-2, such that the auditor shall determine the accurate EZID to certify and apply to the January 1, 2025 assessment date. Number six, upon filing of this resolution with the auditor, the LPUEA staff shall forward electronically scanned versions of the final documents to the city of LaPorte and Greater Highlands LLC for its records and keep a copy for the LPUEA permanent records. End of resolution.
Excellent work, sir.
Nice.
This is a resolution and can pass this evening, Bert Cook?
Whoever drafted that resolution must have been getting paid by the word, I think. It's, it is overly complex, but it's relatively simple what has occurred. We've done these before, if you remember, but typically we see them on tax abatements. So we are talking about the Aldi Grocery Store. When the project was developed, they received an investment deduction, which they received approval to use that incentive from you all on the council. Since then, they, the property was sold and a new owner missed the filing deadline, as you probably, you know, deducted from the resolution. They called and addressed it right away, it was a, just a clerical error. We do allow for one waiver of noncompliance, made it very clear to them that any mistakes in the future, we will not do this again, that will, they will lose out on the incentive for that year. But as you, as you all know, the investment deduction is property tax savings on both their real and personal property, and then in turn, they pay a fee to the Urban Enterprise Association. And so the UEA acted on this, on this request at their meeting, they called a special meeting last week to make sure that they could conduct the public hearing and then forward this to council for your consideration at this meeting. All the other investment parameters have been met. I think the company is, regrets the mistake on the filing deadline and will make sure that this is addressed appropriately moving forward.
Questions for Mr. Cook?
So, Bert, it was just a mistake.
Yeah, they missed it by a month. So it's May 15th is the deadline, they thought it was June 15th. There is, frankly, there's a number of different things that get filed right in that one window of time, so I can see, if you're not familiar with Indiana, I could, it's easy to see how you could easily make that mistake. Thank you.
Further comments? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Councilman Galloway, introduction of a resolution.
Okay. Your Honor, I'd like to introduce a resolution to transfer funds within the 2025 budgets.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Councilman Galloway.
Where, whereas there are additional monies needed in the certain line items in the 2025 budgets in order to pay for essential services and obligations. Now therefore be it, and is hereby resolved by the common council of the city of LaPorte, Indiana, that the following transfers be made within the following budgets for the year 2025. General Communications, 1101-311, from 331 Printing Advertising to 315 Professional Services, Police Department, 110-370, from 241 Other Supplies to 351.002 Police Cleaning Services, $4,700. MVH Fund, 220-524, from 11 Salaries to 211 Office Supplies, $500. Local Road and Streets, LRS, 2202-2-524, from operating, from 231 Operating Supplies to 361 Repairs Maintenance, $3,600. From 231 Operating Supplies to 291 Repairs Maintenance Supplies, $3,000. Tiff One Downtown, 4445-701, from 411 Land to 315 Professional Services, $80,000. Tip Two, Thomas Rose Industrial Park, 4446-701, from 421 Infrastructure to 351 Professional Services, $50,000. Tip Three, East Gate, 4447-701, from 421 Infrastructure to 315 Professional Services, $10,000. Tip Four, Town Square, 44, well, 4448-701, from 421 Infrastructure to 315 Professional Services, $10,000. I think that's it, I gotta turn the page.
I thought there was.
Now that's it.
Thank you, sir. This is a resolution. Clerk Treasurer Parthone.
I included in your packets tonight all of the requests from department heads and then the approved RDC resolution from July 30th. So if there's any further questions beyond that supporting documentation, I'd be happy to answer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I think we do have a comment, why not comment on Sue's suggestion and be glad to do that? In fact, Craig Phillips is here, and I think the bid about, per Sue's request, having trees removed that were too low when people were walking, that has been done on several occasions. Pavers have been fixed, repaired by the bid district on several occasions. We have more to do. In fact, I know the bid district who pays for the downtown changes is limited to $85,000 a year, is working on the north side of Zeldin's where there is a little bit of a bowl that needs to be fixed, and those are also in the plans and the works to repair those. So I don't know if you want to add on the benches, but, Mayor?
Okay.
Yeah, just real quick, so annually, the bid district does do repairs to pavers. We compile a list, we take a look at the worst areas, basically based on the budget that's available and decide which ones need to be done, so we do that on an annual basis. I believe they're planning on doing some of that again this year, so I'll pass. What I, actually what I'll do is I'll reach out, I'll reach out to Mrs. Jess and get some of the specifics on the locations that she's talking about, so we can make sure we specifically look at those, because we do take those concerns and take those in consideration. On the benches, we've been removing benches due to the benches being in poor repair in various locations. We do have a style that we've picked out for new benches. We need to identify a funding source, basically to install some of those, and those benches do include a bar in the center of them in the design, basically designed to not allow for people to sleep on them and that sort of thing, but still use the benches as they're intended to be used. So that's what I can share at this point. You know, as funding becomes available, we'll do that in phases in the downtown to replace those as we can. Otherwise, as those, you know, kind of fall into disrepair, we're not able to repair them any longer. We have made some repairs, we're like replacing slats and things like that on some of those benches, but as that is no longer an option, we retire those benches or move them to different locations if we can fix them, if there are requests to move them, so.
And I just want to say, and I know, I think she, we appreciate what Sue brings to us because we don't see everything. Many of those have been repaired or removed, thanks to her. I know you've worked on, not to put you on the spot, but we've estimated complete overhaul of the downtown and the necessary work. It was in the many millions, correct?
Yeah. Uh, trying to remember that number off the top of my head. Forty, roughly?
It was close, yes.
Thirty to forty million total, yeah. If I recall. So we did about, just as a reference, we did about $50,000 worth of paver repairs last year. So we'll plan on doing some of those again yet this year, and I will bring that to their attention. I'll reach out to you and follow up with you on those exact locations if you can remember where those are, so.
But I just want to say, I mean, we do appreciate the comments, the concerns, the thoughts from people like Sue, like George Cowles about the rumly, has helped us dig into some things, and we appreciate that. It's all of us working together.
Yep.
So thank you, Craig.
Yep, thank you.
Hey Craig, have you ever thought about just getting the metal ones?
I'm sorry? They are, the ones that we intend to replace the ones that are there now with are metal.
Good, because that way the wood doesn't rot, they do good at our club.
They're aluminum.
Yeah.
Black, they're black aluminum. So we picked out a style, manufacturer, and, you know, like I said, as funds become available to replace some of those, we'll do that. But we have that, it's called a pattern book, which lays out all the different types of street furniture that we would plan on replacing things with.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
I have one more question.
Please.
Now, if the streets, the streets, the sidewalks, even if the, the trees are in the, the city area, you know what I mean?
The bid?
On the city side.
Yeah. No matter what, can people go out and just trim the limbs so it's not banging in your head, or they have to get ahold of somebody? I don't mean a complete tree knockoff, but just, you know, the low limbs.
I think it would probably be best to contact the city to do that. There are, I know what you're talking about, I can think of someone in Indiana.
Okay.
Well, I just, I know there's like bat laws and such between like April and October, tree trimming rules that have to be followed.
Okay, because I've had several questions.
Tucker King is, I mean, been really good to work with.
And the street department.
As short as, as tall as I am, if I'm banging into them tree limbs, there's something wrong here.
And we appreciate that, so we all got to work together, keep our eyes, ears open. Other comments? We are coming into difficult budget times. We are also, the city is gathering all elected officials, all local units of government, so that we can look, and we've invited Baker Tilly to come, talk about what the financial picture is, moving forward for schools, counties, trustees.
Libraries.
Libraries, I mean, just about everybody, what layers of government are needed, because as we continue to see reductions in property taxes, not everybody can still withstand services moving forward, and how can we be as efficient as possible and provide as much as possible, I mean, amongst all units of government?
Yeah.
And, you know, hold everybody accountable. Hold us all accountable, make sure your local units are doing something, and they're not just receiving funds to do nothing with, so.
Before I say adjournment, can I have one more comment?
Please.
Does anybody else have a big time NIPS goal bill? And what are they doing with all that money?
And I think.
My one up forty percent.
And I think some of the other council members had the same concern you have, that even though we don't have that control, is looking at the residents, because when we talk about water, we talk about wastewater. People want their basements to stop flooding in many instances, when we get backups and so forth. The only way to do that, and we talked about it on day one when we took over in this administration, was we have a hundred million dollar water wastewater infrastructure problem. So we can ignore it, not do anything, but I think we've already seen the benefits based on the monthly bills that go back into infrastructure to improve everywhere the city, and we're going to have that discussion in the fall for wastewater and so forth, and the work that needs to be done. And it's difficult on those residents that are already seeing increases in NIPS go water and sewer.
Thank you. A motion to adjourn?
Second.
Yeah.
Favor?
Aye. Aye. Somebody second it.
Opposed, we are adjourned, have a great evening, everybody.